I'm sure I heard that. I'm not sure if I heard that. Yeah. It's now it's like.
Hey, I saw.
I'm sure I heard that. I heard that.
They did the whole three three.
How long? Yeah. I'm in. I'm in. Great.
Okay. Like a circle.
I did. Yeah. I know you. That's your. Oh, yeah. Yeah. He doesn't care. And what what tracks do those clean out? But I don't guess them. But I'm going to put the hair. It's little and there's a long hair. Yes. Awesome. The awesome trick is make that a big thing.
Oh, this.
It looks like. See that there's no word on the top. No judgment. Yeah. It is so great. She had to get the mom. And it almost started to relax. They got a stamp today. Oh, wow. I think it has my own name. I think the most incredible is that way. And I just have to do it. And then I'll tell you all that it has. Yeah, yeah. It's a place of happiness.
Yeah.
Does it feel like different things?
Now it's not that useful.
No.
No.
Going to do the indoor. What's your service again?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're on your bike yet?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just stopped in the back so far. I've been to a bathroom spot. But you're gonna hit it this time. You gotta be early for out in traffic. The Sunday River Soys and I'll help lower.
I missed all that. One day when David got his haircut in Bethel, the after he was saying, yeah, don't even try and go to the transfer station on a weekend. You can't get there. It'll take hours. Really happen.
That's it. Tonight's the first time we're gonna be broadcast live.
Oh, why?
How you been? Nancy says you have an e-bike that you're. Or she excited? So you take all your clothes up then?
Yeah.
I guess it gets a little smaller nowadays.
Go pro travel. Take one big camera. First of those to YouTube.
Okay.
Is that a chant industrial nerd? All the slightens people playing. Just this week.
Oh, this is it?
The main board.
Can you tell how many people are?
Yeah.
A lot of people.
Yeah. All the people are. That's why. A lot of those. It's true. No, never.
Oh, I sound smart too.
No. Well, Calvin. Everybody say that. That's why I speak.
So it's the. What do you have? Do you have a phone or a internet?
No. We've got.
Cause we're. So is this? Is this? This is Wi-Fi or is this? So we're looking at cell towers, right? I guess from here no cell tower.
Yeah, lots of.
Again, the valley.
Yeah.
Oh, right. Tell us about it. Who's the?
Hello? What? To Amy Henry, a resident, town nurse, county office, state main. Please. In the name of the state main, you are hereby directed to notify and warn candidates of the town and area to the second county and state qualified by law to vote in unaffairs and to notify and warn candidates to meet at the direct grand hall six o'clock in the evening to act on the following articles. Article one thirty has set out below to win. Article one is to choose a moderator by secret ballot to preside at seven eighty. Any nominations for moderator?
I nominate Bernard Maxwell.
Bernard Maxwell. Could we have a brick ballot, please? Ah, Joe would be great. We got two. Got two? Get off. One half is now closed with the much colored. Cause he have a box of stephels. Yes. Should we have two votes? For Bernard Maxwell. Bird? Meaning a journey. Oh, please raise your hand. I, Bernard Maxwell, swear that I support the constitution of the United States and the state for long as I shall continue to citizen thereof. I, Bernard Maxwell, swear that I were faithfully discharged to best my abilities, the duty to come out upon me as moderator of the state. According to the constitution and law. One. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. We're here again.
We are.
And I haven't tell you that this is a huge power compared to Gillian. In May, in March, in Gillian, we had seven people. But it was a night of that. Big, big social being in March. So they give good reason, though. Rose and I will be only two there, I think, that weren't part of the inner group. But anyway, just something to check about. And praise you guys up for coming. Still important thing to do. Where we can have them all set. Anyway, article two. And I see the money is after the article, so when you make a motion, you would even say it's at the number three, seven, three, four, eight, five, or add written, just so that we don't have to back. Yes. I took it your order, so you got it. Do I have a motion to allow Joelle Corrigan to speak tonight as neither? She's a known resident. Could I have a motion?
Allow Joelle to speak.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Anybody in favor? Oh. Anybody opposed? Okay, Joelle.
Thank you.
You're a hug speaker.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Come on, boy, just make one speaker. Guess we're all set then. I would like your approval to use the main moderator's manual if we have anything that comes up that we need to find a little more information about. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. I guess of all my housekeeping things, those are the only one pertinent tonight, so we will move on. Article two, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for administration and salaries. The recommendation is three hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Move article two, credit.
Thank you. With a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question or discussion on article two? Not seeing any, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article two as read and presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article two is approved as presented. Article three, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for ambulance service. The recommendation is seventeen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Would we raise it seventeen thousand two hundred and fifteen?
No. Thank you. And second. Been moved and seconded.
Second.
Thank you. Any question or comment on article three?
Is it still back yet?
Yes.
Very good. Anything else? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article three as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article three is approved as presented. Article four, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the assessor's expense. The recommendation is thirteen thousand dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
Would we raise it thirteen thousand dollars?
Thank you. With a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on article four? Not seeing any, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article four as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article four is approved as presented. Article five, shall the town authorize the selectmen to carry forward an extended balance of forty-seven hundred dollars for the maintenance of the cemetery? The recommendation is that it should pass. Could I have a motion, please?
Oh, it will pass.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on article five? Not seeing any, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article five as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article five is approved as presented. Article six, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the committees and boards. The recommendation is twenty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise it twenty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
With a second. Been moved and seconded. Any question on article six?
Um, yeah.
Yes.
What committees and boards are we talking about?
Good questions.
Planning board, school board, police board, health officer. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on article six? Not seeing anything, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article six as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article six is approved as presented. Article seven, shall the town authorize the selectmen to carry forward the unextended balance of twenty-five hundred dollars from the recreation account and give it to the town of Ethel Recreation for Nury Kids. It's recommended to pass. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to pass.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on article seven? Yes.
How does it benefit the movement this? Is there? The family has to pay?
The family has to pay some insurance that has to.
Okay. So it's basically goes into the pot to help everybody?
Well.
In a sense.
Yeah.
That's hot.
Yep.
That's why I know. Okay.
Yep. I'm not opposed. This is one.
Good question. Anything else? Not seeing anything, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article seven as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article seven is approved as presented. Article eight, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the community assistance. It's recommended to pass. You can see the list. And I will not read it unless you want me to. Could I have a motion for all?
Would we raise it thirty-three? Thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars?
Thank you.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on any on article eight?
We did receive a lot of requests this year. We did have three new ones. The Bethel Historical Society, which I think was a great idea. The Cancer Resource Center of Western Maine. And they help Nury people in particular. This money will be for Nury residents. And then the Oxford County Health Mental Health, I believe is the same thing, will help Nury residents.
Good.
I have a question. Um, probably for you. Is the KIP scholarships five hundred dollars? I know we have a lot of littles in the area now. Is that going to be enough for what you might perceive for kids?
Usually we got two kids that use them, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Bethel Library, uh, how much was that last year? Who might have?
I think it was the same. Yeah, same as last year. Six thousand. Yes, sir.
What is age friendly?
If you come here on Tuesdays, you could do the tai chi with them. They would have a wakis group that goes at ghouls. They have, they'll take you for rides to doctor's appointments. If you need a welfare check, they'll help you do that. They're perfect.
Okay. They're not approved.
Yeah.
You're probably not older.
Anything else on article eight? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article eight as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article eight is approved as presented. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate money received from the cable franchise agreement to the Western Maine Access Television Channel eleven. It's recommended to pass.
Could I have a motion?
Thank you.
Pass.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on article nine?
Mr. Martin? Yes, I'd just like to make an explanation that tonight's meeting is live broadcast over YouTube and will be available on a regular cable station tomorrow morning. Four years ago, I had a seizure, which set the whole progress of Western Hills Access probably to the bank. But fortunately, my son had worked for my brother at the Norway Carer Station, so he was able to step in and get the station back on track. And so we've been able to set up to do town ethical meetings, uh, which has proved to be extremely beneficial, especially in controversial issues, because so many rumors get started. People can go back and say, well, this is what was said. So it's the only place in the country where you can get public access to live events on air. So we're glad that Convery would support us.
Thank you, Brooke. Any question on article nine? Not seeing a hearing, then any, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article nine as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article nine is approved as presented. Article ten, to formally make known that Western Hills Area Television is seeking volunteers to operate a camera to record and livestream, when possible, town government meetings. Western Hills Area Television staff will provide full handouts on equipment, training, and handle all post-production. It's recommended that this would pass. Could I have a motion?
Would we pass?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question? Brooke?
Yes, uh, because four years ago, I had a seizure because I was going in every direction trying to get the station up and running. I realized that I was overextending myself, so, uh, I'm looking for help. We've got everything streamlined, so basically it's coming in, turning it on, monitoring it, make sure that we've got a signal. So we're looking for volunteers. It's pretty interesting, the whole process, and we're willing to train anybody, so.
Thank you. Anything more on article ten? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article ten as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article ten is approved as presented. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to borrow or appropriate from unappropriated service the sum not more than two thousand dollars to be used as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Sure, Mark.
I do.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on eleven?
Is that enough money?
Is that enough money?
Yeah, it's a good debt.
Yep. Anything else? Not seeing anything, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article eleven as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article eleven is approved as presented. Approved as presented. Article twelve, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for drainage problem maintenance. Thirteen thousand one hundred dollars is the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to raise it fifteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any question on article twelve? Yes, sir.
And then the particular cover? Pardon? Anything in particular that it covers?
It just miscellaneous, uh, keep blowing electricity, heat, plating. No big projects here, did you?
Is that true, replacing the raft?
That's only something that that's under another. Yes, there is one for that. That isn't the bunch.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's see, we got some work down on the side here. What was that?
That was a subject. It froze up last winter. You're, wow. You're, yeah. See what I'm saying? Winter before. How's that right in there?
Anything else? If not, then you can't. I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of article twelve as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article twelve is approved as presented. Article thirteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for highways and bridges. The recommendation is five hundred and four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise it five hundred and four thousand nine hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on article thirteen? Yes, sir.
What work needs to be done on the road?
We have a hundred thirty-eight thousand for the winter roads, twenty-nine thousand for the sun, salt and sand. Street signs is thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Summer roads is two hundred ninety-seven four oh nine. That's paving, uh, wheel road and monkey road. And hopefully doing a parking lot for us at the town office so we can park on the side where we do in the winter time. And three thousand is miscellaneous for who knows what could come up.
Uh, the, uh, uh, light bulb, how much was that again?
The two signs? That's all signs for the town. We have to buy street signs for other places. And we need three new town signs.
Last time I knew, we only had one, one, uh, outside light that you paid for.
Yeah, this is a license.
Okay.
No.
Yes, sir.
I see the next article is two hundred thousand for the repair of Simmons Brook Bridge. Why isn't it including two lane bridges on article thirteen?
Cause we thought it was such a hefty sum, we'd like a different explanation, so we kept it separate.
Anything else on article thirteen, highways and bridges? If not, then I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of article thirteen as presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article thirteen is approved as presented. Article fourteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for repair of the Simons Brook Bridge. Uh, wait, hold on. Simons Brook Bridge. It's recommended to pass. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise it two hundred thousand dollars.
Second a motion?
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Yes.
Where is that bridge? Have they do on my, never heard of it.
Joelle, we're too busy.
Come on.
Simmons Bridge or Simmons, depending on how you pronounce that word, um, is just before Yates property on Sunday River. And it's what, the Allen's house? Yeah.
I suspect that you would not find a D in the, uh, in the spelling of that, Brooke. Either it's Simmons or Simon. Simmons. It's Simmons?
Simmons is all but.
Yes. I always get confused because I believe it has two N's as well, but it does not have a D. I'm sure of that.
The explanation of why we've got to put a new deck on it now, Alex, is when we had the road engineered and built, the water run onto it. In the winter time, it splashed into the sand and cried and froze and broke the deck apart. So that's why we're spending money to get redone. It's been there fifty-something years and nothing done to it. And the year after the road was elevated, the water ran out of it. Now we're at two hundred thousand dollars there.
We also have an abutment that's being undermined by the river, so. And we have to have special contractors that are allowed to listen to water for shorelines over.
Do you have an estimate for those repairs or that's just a guestimate?
It's a guestimate right now. We have an engineer working on our cost estimate, but we wanted to put money in this year's budget so we would be covered.
Anything further? Not seeing anything, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article fourteen as read and discussed, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article fourteen is approved as presented. Article fifteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the purpose of paying fees or charges required for membership in the Navy Hospital Association property and casualty risk pool and other town insurance costs. The recommendation is a hundred and twenty thousand two hundred dollars. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to raise a hundred and forty thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on article fifteen? Not seeing a hearing, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of article fifteen as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article fifteen is approved as presented. Article sixteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for operation and maintenance of the mystical building. The recommendation is forty thousand three hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to raise it forty thousand three hundred dollars.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions on article sixteen? Yes.
Simmons Green, just the blowing and the electric.
I bet we're gonna put in heat pumps in the meeting room side and Joelle's office. We got them on the underside of the corner on last year.
Thank you. Anything else on article sixteen? Seeing none, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of article sixteen as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed. Article sixteen is approved as presented. Article seventeen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for operation and maintenance of the private department. The recommendation is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars. Do I have a motion, please? Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise $128,547.
Five hundred and forty-seven.
Five forty-seven, right?
Five forty-seven.
Okay, good.
But I was saying that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article seventeen? Yes, yes. What is this one covered?
It's covering the, uh, all the equipment. They have to buy new turnout gear, some of them needed new boots, gloves, um, updating equipment, their operations, maintenance, trainings, yes, basic. Heat, like the certain falls, pagers, radios, yeah. Who is he, it's all?
How many volunteers we had, man?
Eight, eight?
Nine.
Nine. Nine. So feel free to join if you'd like to join up. Well, the women outnumber the men, just say it.
Nine of all people.
Okay, all those in favor of Article, unless there's anything else? Didn't ask that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of Article seventeen, to raise and appropriate money for the operation and maintenance of the fire department, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Article seventeen is approved as presented. Article eighteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for sanitation, pay all fees and membership charges for the tri-town solid wage. $221,500 is the recommendation. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $221,500.
Thank you. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article? Yes?
We passed an amendment so that all contractors supposed to have dumpsters now, right? If it's over a certain price?
Yeah, we did, and some of them are getting around that by getting burn permits and burning their clean wasted lumber than burning it outside.
If I catch them, I'll put a stop to that.
We're, um, meeting with Bethel, trying to change the fees for the stickers, construction debris and all that stuff because trash is getting very costly. We used to get fees for recyclables, but you don't anymore, so. In fact, I went up about sixty-seven percent this year, but I don't think it's gonna be enough.
That's your job.
Yeah.
Yes?
Do you know if the recyclables actually get recycled?
They have the cardboard part. When you go to the transfer station, they have a compacted cardboard. The other one is also the trash.
It's cardboard and everything else.
Well, I don't, um, I don't know if it's a bin, but that's recyclable and stuff. Would they all, I couldn't tell you, but they do it for sale. That's out of my control.
Anything else on Article eighteen? If not, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article eighteen as presented, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article eighteen is approved as $121,500. Article nineteen, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for street lights. The recommendation is $1,200. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $1,200.
Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article nineteen?
Sure. Um, has anyone looked into a changing of the lights to LED lights?
They are.
Oh, great.
Been done for almost two years right now.
How many are there? Chris?
Five or six.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, there's five or six, there's not too many. But they are LED because I checked into that when I came back.
Anything else on Article nineteen? Not seeing a hearing of anybody, I'll call for your vote. All those in favor of Article nineteen as presented, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article nineteen is approved as presented. Article twenty, shall the town authorize the selectmen to carry forward unexpended balances as they be necessary, all other unexpended balances to lapse to the fund balance? It's recommended to pass. Could I have a motion please?
Motion to pass.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question? Yes, sir.
How much money is in the fund balance?
Two point six.
Fund balance?
Unexpend- unexpended.
That's in the unexpected?
Unexpended, yeah.
So we don't know how much is in the, in the fund balance?
I don't have any trouble.
So what is the fund balance used for?
Everything. It's like the general fund.
Well, I guess if you, if you said something was a thousand dollars and you only spent eight hundred of it, that two hundred is part of that.
So it's a makeup fund?
Sort of, leftovers or whatever, yeah.
They all go back into the general fund.
Thank you. Anything else on Article twenty? Not seeing anything then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty as read and discussed, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Article twenty is approved as presented. Article twenty-one, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for digitizing town of Nori tax map and revising the paper maps. It's recommended to be approved. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $5,000.
Second? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-one? Not seeing anything, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-one as read, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Article twenty-one is approved as presented. Article twenty-two, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the Sunday River Schoolhouse account. The recommendation is $4,000. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $4,000.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-two? Yes?
What's that cover?
It's for the mowing and repairs of the schoolhouse, um, maybe do some of the steps, um, what else we got? The steps, the shed door and the roof shed. The shed that's behind the schoolhouse.
Would you couple hood, would you, the wood be up a little?
Yeah.
More than a couple.
Yes?
This schoolhouse, that's that one new schoolhouse, it's on Sunday River Road?
Yes.
Yes.
So it needs repair?
Yes.
Well, that's a good deal for flower boxes.
If somebody wants to fall a chip beyond our summer schoolhouse committee.
I go to France, um.
We'll try to get flowers for the.
Well, I put the ones that are over here, I could put them over there if you want me to.
And you can do it and.
Right handed.
It'll be right up to you.
Thank you. Anything further on Article twenty-two? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-two as read and discussed, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article twenty-two is approved as presented. Article twenty-three, to see what action the town wishes to take regarding allowing the selectmen to spend over ten percent on the casualty improvement account without seeking prior town approval. The recommendation passes. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to pass.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-three? Yes?
What, how much money is funded in the capital to approve with the town? If we can't just serve the law.
Let's see. Anything further on Article twenty-three? Yes, sir.
Article twenty-three starting over with Article eleven. You go back to the town and take money, pay the emergency expenses and something like that.
Article eleven is for the unappropriated.
It's a different account, right?
Yeah.
Two different kinds.
Yeah. Different accounts, you know, you can have different accounts for everything.
Very good. Anything further on Article twenty-three? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-three as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? One of those. Article twenty-three is approved as presented. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will allow the selectmen to sell or dispose of any town property for the value of not more than $2,000 under such terms and conditions as they deem advisable. Is regular, move on to the board first. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Then move and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-four? Yes?
What happens to the town or re-signs that they're going to replace?
What happens to the town?
The old town, the town summers.
The old town?
You're replacing those, correct?
Yes.
Because they have value, without.
We'll probably keep one for historical and then add a couple of them worth saving. They've been, been repeated a couple times, so.
They have, they're like a particle plywood thingy.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
They can't.
Anything else on that? Yes?
So you're asking for a value example of $2,000. Who's, who determines the value of any amount of $2,000?
Well, it depends who you have to sell, you know, if we have like one of these tables or something, you'd see what we pay for it or whatever, but.
All right, so when it says town property, it doesn't mean real, real estate, real property?
No, no.
Okay, just items.
Good questions. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-four as read and explained, please raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Article twenty-four is approved as presented. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to fund the following capital reserve accounts with undesignated reserve funds. The town building reserve fund, $75,000, and the fire department reserve account, $25,000. It's recommended to pass. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to pass.
It's been moved and seconded, pass. Any question on Article twenty-five? Yes?
What exactly does the reserve account, what's it set up for?
It's like if we have, um, a well issue or a septic issue, we would have extra funds, we would have funds that we could take out of there if we had to replace and move suddenly because of a storm or whatever. That's what these reserve funds would be for. And it's for all town buildings.
Is this done annually?
Yeah.
So there's money in the account for heaven and spending?
Actually, no, it's in the red. The town buildings, the reserve is in the red.
Yes, sir.
Well, wasn't the reserve account for the fire department supposed to be an account that we added to every single year to build up funds in case we needed to buy something?
Yeah.
And that still happens?
Yeah.
So in the reserve account from the fire department, what we have in that?
Anything else? Good questions. If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-five as read and discussed, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, any opposed? Article twenty-five is approved as presented. Article twenty-six, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for the forest fire reserve account. $5,000 is the recommendation. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $5,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-six? Seeing none then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-six as read, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article twenty-six is approved as presented. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote for appropriate money received from the registrations and the files of dogs to enforce the animal control laws. Recommended to pass. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Thank you. Then move and seconded. Any questions? Yes?
Who does enforce the animal control law?
We have Sue Milligan right now, which she plans on retiring. So if you don't, anybody that would like to apply to the position, all the towns will look at this one. We're going to a meeting in Rumford tomorrow, uh, Wednesday.
Which shelter does Mary generally send the animals to?
Which?
Harvest.
Is it harvest?
Harvest, harvest center.
Out on the bridge, good fiber bomb.
Anything further? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-seven as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article twenty-seven is approved as presented. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to use the overlay or abatements on taxes. It's recommended to pass. Could I have a motion?
Take a motion to pass.
Thank you. Seconded, it's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twenty-eight? Yes?
Does that mean?
What does that mean?
When we do tax commitment, you have what you call an overlay after they've gone through all the figures of mill state personal property, what we have to, what we hold on tonight adds in, and then what we receive from the state, they take out, um, and there's an overlay that's supposed to, you can only have a third percent.
Up to five percent.
Five percent, so. And usually you don't have that many abatements.
Anything further? If not, I'd ask you to vote on Article twenty-eight. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight as read, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Article twenty-eight is approved as presented. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to charge interest on taxes not paid before a certain date and establish the date and rate of interest. Received annual rate of eight percent on taxes not paid before September 30th and March 31st, two installment payments. It's recommended to pass. Could I have a motion?
Motion for it to pass.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yeah, what was the interest last year?
Six percent, except by the state. Yeah, we don't go to the hat.
If there's nothing else? All those in favor of Article twenty-nine as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article twenty-nine is approved as presented. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid on the town on abated taxes at three percent for fiscal year. It's recommended to pass.
Make a motion to pass.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question? Seeing none then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty as read, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed. Article thirty is now approved as presented. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed and set the rate of interest at zero percent for overpayments pursuant to Title 36 MRSA subsection 506. It's recommended to pass.
Make a motion to pass.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-one as read, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Article thirty-one is approved as presented. Article thirty-two, to see what sum of money the town will raise and appropriate for minority community church operations. $1,500 is the recommendation. Could I have a motion please?
Make a motion to raise the $1,500.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Yes?
Why don't we hold off on this one there to see if we're gonna sell the building or?
This is regular maintenance, so we figured we'd put this one first because we're still gonna have to mow the grass if, whatever we do.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 32 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 32 is approved as presented. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sell the minority community church building and land. Could I have a motion, please?
How long will it take to pass?
Second. Thank you. Then move the seconded. Any discussion, question? Yes, bro.
Yes. Unfortunately, this was decided at the one meeting last year that I did the report. So I don't know what the discussion was because the tape I received was unintelligible. So I don't know why we came to this decision. If you remember how this whole issue started back during COVID, I requested the town to use the church for baptism. It was deemed by the town administrator at that time it was unsafe. I want to ask you, how many of you have been underneath the church? Raise your hand. You?
I am not.
You? 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 Okay. Are there no indications that any of the engineers have been underneath the church that made any of the estimates that were done? To me, this is a rushed judgment. This is the historical building. The proposal and the estimate that were received was totally out of the ballpark. This building was traditionally used for one hour a week for church service. It never used to use or need modern facilities. People claimed on it. So for the town to require all of the requirements that have been deemed necessary is totally unrealistic. I would urge the town to defeat this and to reestablish the committee that had discussions, had disagreements, what we were making progress. The previous town administrator pulled the rug off of Congress with no discussion. The previous president administration hasn't really given it serious thought for the historical significance of the minority community church. So I would urge my citizens to defeat this article. Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
I just want to say, I wasn't here when all that took place, as you all know. I was told it was unsafe. We've got an engineer come. We have a copy of this proposal. If anybody wants to see it, it's coming to selectmen's meetings. The church is owned by the town now. It's not owned by church. It's not run as a church, and it hasn't been since the town took it, what, 2018? If the town's gonna keep it, we've gotta keep the upkeep, just like this building. They're all costly. Are you gonna use it? You're gonna rent it? What are you gonna do with it? Yeah, I got married there the first time. I've done weddings there. It's small. It's not big. There's no parking. That's a big safety issue. As for the foundation stuff, then I don't know. That's why we hired an engineer.
Well, didn't you post the video of you and Jim Sisko under the building?
Yes.
Okay, and they kind of showed that some of the stuff was unsafe?
Yes, but they gave you an estimate of under $1,000 to fix it. But you required
Insurance.
Without any discussion on it.
Yeah, we do the insurance for anybody that doesn't.
But there was no discussion on it. It was a damn deal.
Well, that's all hindsight. We can't change that.
That's why we're here.
That's right.
Trying to sell it for some upgraded values.
No, no. We are here to decide if the town wants to keep it or sell it. If you want to keep it, you vote yes, you want to keep it. If you don't, you vote no. And I did get an estimate on to sell it, and she said the fair market value at this point is $90,000. This is all public knowledge, and this is why we're here.
And that was a gift to the town, correct? It was a gift to the town.
Well, the town voted. You had to vote to accept it.
Well, it was a gift. So why would the town
No.
Make a profit on a building that was gifted?
Then we would, what, we give it away? We can't.
Give it to an organization that would use it as a church.
We'll tell them tonight, and then we can talk about it again. But you can't do this.
I'm going to have to clarify something. The state domain requires any public building to have a bathroom if it's gonna be rented, just like this one does. It has to have a bathroom, which means it has to have a septic. And DOT does not want us parking on the road. So we have a half acre to work with. It is a tight space.
There's a town road within 50 feet of the building.
And with a bunch of private property owners that may or may not want people parking on that road.
So gurney.
The steps are actually in the town right away. The state right away to the road. Right away. That's right in the front of the building.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does that really have a bathroom?
It does not have a bathroom. We don't even have a non-compliant bathroom.
Did you have a question?
Is there room to put a foundation right behind that building?
We, there is there is, does room enough for frost walls? Does ledge? We would expend more money to blast to put in a full foundation, but yes, we can move it back.
Frost walls behind the wall there.
Yeah, frost wall, septic system, and the well have all been laid out, and the engineer put the dead in this spot.
Can I have a little bit of black today, sir?
A little, but it's not designed correctly. Because you can't back out on Route 26.
Why wouldn't that be grandfathered? Because of a historical use?
It's not historical. It's historical to the town in Newry, but it doesn't get any historical register markers, sadly.
I got one here.
Let's, let's.
When was the last time that building was used for?
I did a wedding.
A wedding.
Yeah, I did a wedding in one of Amberbrook, Mary.
Amberbrook.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't when the engineers did it and had like 20 or 25 people, it was all supposed to hold? At the time when they engineered it?
No.
I was thinking because of the rock wall underneath there, once thought they extended it.
I'd have to look at Bobo's report. This engineer didn't, didn't look at that.
No, of course not.
Do you really want to spend $210,000 on a building that you don't know what the purpose is gonna be?
That's why we're asking. That's why we're here.
I was part of the minority church committee, and we hashed it out. We went over the same thing 20 times, and we never actually came up with a purpose for the building other than an occasional step and occasional use.
Well, I, on my end of it, I figure if we can fix it up, if we rent it for weddings, you're gonna have to go above $300. Just like here, we do not, we rent this for $100 for residents, $200 for non. It's not even enough to cover your electricity costs and cleaning. So if we're gonna keep it, we're gonna have to rent it.
Why did the town take it in the first place?
Well, it's a good question. It all depends on who shows up at town meetings, bro. You can tell that.
So you can rent it without a septic?
We have to get it.
You can't even rent it.
Right now, you can't rent it.
Right now, it's against our laws.
So it's no need for me to ever rent it?
No, not the way it is. Not from what I was told.
Right.
I'm going by what I was told.
If you put a porta potty in it, is that qualified for being able to rent it?
It does not for commercial use. Commercial meaning the general public's allowed to assemble in it. The porta potty doesn't meet that standard. Not, not on a, every weekend basis. If we're gonna have something that we're gonna rent out, I think they're gonna want better than a green porta john outback.
How much land was that? Suzanne Haina, a couple years ago, said something about Mary Gay so much.
About a half acre.
It's almost, it's exactly a half acre.
Half acre, yeah.
Within square feet.
All the time we were doing the committee, we were told that it was a noncompliant law. Is it still a noncompliant law?
Technically, it's a legal, nonconforming law, yes.
What does that mean?
For our ordinances, you have to get specific variances in order to like put in parking, to add the stairs. We have to move the building back. We are in the state right away. We can't work on this building the way it is. Back when it was adopted, when it, I'm sorry, when it was gifted, that half acre meant the ordinance. It does not anymore. The ordinance has changed. Yeah.
If someone were to purchase that and do something with it and then build, what's our zoning? Do people have to have an acre? Is it half an acre? What is?
It can be sold as a legal, nonconforming lot, but they're still gonna, even if they want to run farmer's market, let's say, from there, they're still gonna need a septic and a place to fill the.
No, I understand that, but if somebody were buying it for a, for personal residence?
Yeah.
And what does Newry require? Is it an acre to be able to build? I don't even know.
It is an acre now, yes, depending on which district you're in, because we have zoning. The majority of it's a different size.
So what purpose would that be for somebody to buy it if you can't even do anything with it?
Because it's a legal, nonconforming lot. We're allowed to sell it, and they're allowed to like build on the same footprint, but they still have to have a septic on the well.
Right, correct. So they could really demolish the building for another one?
They can. No, because they, same square.
On a half acre?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Good discussion. Anything else? Yes, sir.
What was historically, if you will, what was the occasion that that was donated to the town?
Wasn't being used anymore. They didn't have a minister. They met, and then they had a church committee, and that dwindled down to two people.
Yeah.
And then they, it just wasn't feasible for them to do the maintenance on it. So they opted to give it to the town for a while.
My opinion is, you know, I don't even know where a building gets to. But it would seem to me that if you've got a small town with a budget of what $3 million and some odd dollars, and to spend, you know, 7% of that to rebuild a church, which is then not going to give you any type of an income, and the fact that why should a small town be involved in a business of running wedding receptions or whatever? It just seems really silly, and they should just, you should just sell it as is to whoever we pay for and put it in a general fund.
I was gonna make a suggestion. Why don't we table it? And I like it. It's all the same that costs us to maintain this mobile on this summer and look into it some more in the next year, one way or the other, keep it or.
But we've been, we've been doing that.
The foundation needs some work.
Yeah, I know that.
So I thought earlier, just to give you an example, if, if we keep, hopefully raise a $100,000, the town's sending out about $2,300 back to the end. And if every tax bill was the same, that's an average of 90,000 bucks a piece to raise that kind of money. But as we all know, not everybody's profusely set, that I used to say, so a lot of the time they're paid for residence. It's not ruled out.
Is it all void residence of the majority? Permission to speak? Would you? Present. Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
I'm Jeff Lee. I lived this on the river all my life. Live because I'm handled now, but I work for the main DOT, and the parking, according to that church, you're probably not going to get permission to park within there right away. So you're gonna lose a huge chunk out front that you're gonna be able to use or not.
Good point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tear it down.
Well, rather than tear it down, this building itself, I understand, historically was a half mile down the road. Anyone ever thought of moving that building to another location?
We talked about, I talked about moving it down here.
Yeah.
On this line.
There's, there's one thing about, there was 51 wires that had to be connected, connected. Move it, you'll cut the roof off on the other. Maybe cut off.
Can we move the question? I didn't have a motion to move the question. Go to the second. Then move the second. To move the question, that means ending the discussion and vote. All those in favor?
We read it. We read the question, please.
I will, yeah. All those in favor of ending the discussion? Okay. Keep them up. Those opposed, ending the discussion. Okay, we've ended the discussion. The question is, and I'm gonna read the question and then call for your vote. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sell the minority community church building and land. All those in favor, please indicate. Thank you. Hold them up. Read the government.
Keep them up, folks. Eddie, are you ready? Put your hand up.
Eddie, you gotta pull the yellow paper up.
Pull it up, Eddie. The way I'm holding up is fine.
Hold it up there, Eddie.
Pull it up.
Pull it up there. So they can have. There you go. I counted 14.
I counted 15.
I got 15, okay.
15. You wanna stand up so we have a check more?
Maybe I didn't count myself. Are we good? Please, I'm good. 15?
15.
Now, those opposed, please stand up.
That's a good point.
Nine.
Mr. Pope Catholic. Mr. Pope Catholic.
Okay, thank you. Don't stand on that. All set? 15 yes, 10 no, so who voted to sell the minority community church building? We do have Article 34. It does say to skip it, but I really don't have a vote on it to do it the way it's named as well, for once things done. So I'm gonna read it and just ask for the vote, and we can defeat it, and we can move on to 35. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate estimated cost or up to $210,000 for development and construction or renovation of the minority community church building. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 34 is defeated. Thank you for that. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept donations not to exceed $5,000 on behalf of the town. Is it recommended to pass? Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Second.
Then move the second. Any question on Article 35? Seeing none, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 35 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 35 is approved as presented. Article 35 is approved as presented. Article 36, see if the town will vote to allow the selectmen, on behalf of the town, to sell in the stores of any real estate acquired by the town for nonpayment of taxes in the best interest of the town and to execute and deliver a quick plan B for second property. Is recommended to pass, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Thank you. Should move the second, any question on Article 16?
Just, what's the whole process for that?
36, thank you.
I'm just wondering like the whole process.
What's the process?
Oh. Yeah, we have to water it, we have to advertise for two or three leaps, and it's quite possible. Have to get the insurance involved, and try to find the previous homeowners. Not gonna win, we don't have too much here, I think we're only done once.
Any other question? Not seeing any, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 36, as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, can you oppose? Article 36 is approved as presented. Article 37, see if the town will vote to appropriate money received from the registrations of snowmobiles and municipal snowmobile agreements to the Windy Valley Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining the snowmobile trail. Is recommended to pass, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Thank you. Should move the second, any question on Article 37?
Where are they allowed to go?
From very corner up to Branch Road, and then to end over to us back though, over Mount Will.
That's about it.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Anything else on Article 37? If nothing, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 37, as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed? Article 37 is approved as presented. Article 38, see if the town will vote to use $200,000 of undesignated funds to offset taxes. Is recommended to pass, do I have a motion, please?
All in. Pass.
Should move the second, any question on Article 38? Yes.
Yeah, $200,000, is that just for the residents, or that's for the billionaires that have built 3, 4, 5, 6,000?
All votes on the same one, all comes out at the same.
So everybody gets a discount?
Yeah.
Do we get a bigger discount because the church is gonna sell?
Maybe.
Question? Yes, sir. There's an undesignated fund.
That's where the money goes that we haven't designated for anything, which flood for taxes, and if we haven't spent it all, it's undesignated.
It's money that has not been specified for any purpose by the town. And so this is specified, $200,000 was out to reduce the tax limit.
Which usually is done every year. You can vote on it every year.
Anything further? On Article 38? If not, I ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 38, as read and explained, please indicate. Thank you, those opposed? Article 38 is approved as presented. Article 39, shall ordinance entitled food sovereignty ordinance be enacted? The recommendation is to pass, and take the option to ask, should move the second. I suspect this is where we will hit.
No, no, they aren't.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the blue paper that you all have?
What are we supposed to do for a citizen?
Pardon?
What are we supposed to do for a citizen?
Yeah, no question. Give it a think, sell your goods on the roadside.
Give them a break, they can sell it without getting licensed.
Yeah, inspection exemption.
That's the big issue.
Yes, sir. Do I understand that this conveys some rights which don't now exist, that expands some rights? Which is, which is atypical for an ordinance, which usually limits rights. I guess my question goes through, is this a solution that serves the problem, or is it...
For some reason, it's a hot going thing for most towns, like the farm stands. The people that sell the baked goods at their farm stands with their hands and all that stuff, they're the ones that push this. In fact, the lady that wanted it is up on Branch Road.
And what it does is it allows local produce sellers, baked goods and whatever, to be able to sell their baked goods without having to be licensed by the state to do it.
You know, like two tests that are required if you're gonna bake in your home, I'm gonna come out and make sure your subject system is functioning, which I'm just gonna look for some pretty blue grass and any smell. And then if that passes, you have to send your water, your well water into the state domain and get that tested and get a certificate back and file that with the state. Those are the two that I'm aware of, I'm not the State Agricultural Department, that they have to do in order to comply with this, and then they can put up a roadside stand and sell their bread.
Like the pie place up the roof?
Pie place is actually fully licensed, because they have a kitchen.
But they, on the back side of the section seven, where they talk about face to face, they're exact. Are they talking about you need to have one person sell and you're already taking the other person? Or if, I guess any interpretation of what that means?
That's what was brought to us, I sent it to the attorney, and that was, so why don't they send that to us? I'm assuming face to face is you have it out there and they can buy it. I don't think you have to be present at the fire, but that's my interpretation.
What would be the repercussions to someone who is selling on the side of the road if we didn't pass this ordinance?
I don't know if there could be an issue if, say I made jam and I didn't say what was in it, and they got sick from something that was in it, I don't know. But I think that would be the state. They would file a claim, I think, with the state domain agricultural or food department. And they would come to that person and say, yeah, your jam's unsafe. It's nothing that the town has been able to force.
So how would this benefit the town?
It won't, really.
How would it benefit someone who's selling on the side of the road?
And they just get freedom to do it without getting a license, which, take that as you will, I don't know.
So it's on record that the member of the planning board had issues with the way that this was written, and didn't think that it would pass legal muster, so I would suggest that the town defeat this article at this time, which how the planning board can do if they're due.
This doesn't have anything to do with the planning boards, no. We didn't write this ordinance, it never came in front of us.
Well, couldn't the planning board weigh in on it?
I don't know why we would, there's no authority for us to.
Right, well, then if we don't need it, then defeat it.
Right.
Anything further? Yes, sir.
How many people do you think that it's gonna serve in our time? We have any?
No idea. We had one lady bring it to us, she was the one that requested it.
Can anyone speak in favor of us passing the ordinance, of what benefit it might be? I think of, and I don't know if it's even fair to compare it, but there was a food sovereignty proposal within the whole state a year ago, and I know that has created a lot of controversy, particularly with interpretation of the Sunday hunting laws. As somebody, once it was passed, the state legislature passed it, and then, then another group said, oh, that had promoted Sunday hunting laws said, well, food sovereignty, I now want to legally challenge the state's Sunday hunting regulations. So it created a whole nother volume of regulations, and I worry a little bit about this, just not knowing what the consequences are. If somebody could speak well of it and or against it, otherwise I feel like we probably shouldn't have something that we don't know so much about.
Yeah, it's too bad the sponsor isn't able to do it. Yeah, because you really, we really don't know that much about it.
Yes?
I think Brenda raised a very good question, and that is whether it's face to face, and I think it's sufficient that you would in the ordinance regarding just that piece alone, and I haven't really discussed it, but I think that's a fair draw, and I'd be against it.
Any further discussion? Do you want to vote? All those in favor of Article 39, which is an ordinance entitled food sovereignty ordinance be enacted? All those in favor, indicate, thank you, those opposed? Article 39 is defeated. Article 40, see if the town will vote by written ballot to permanently increase the property tax levy limit of $1,768,857 established by the town in Norrie by the state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. Is recommended to pass, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Thank you. Should move the second? Second, should move the second. Any question, any discussion? Yes?
Seems like this should have been the first article.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, I think, that's not a question. Everything that we voted to approve of, dollar limits, and total, total, and total, and everything, if we out totaled ourselves, we're gonna raise more from our tax rate to go up.
If you're ready to vote, I do have to have you do it by written ballot? I don't know if they've got some blank papers ready in the lot?
It's on here, it's in there.
If you're ready, whoever would like, come in and vote, give me the cash ballot. It's just one of the things that the state says we have to do on the side. I guess votes allow the budget to increase, and no vote does.
Are you still recording? Are you still recording right now? Yes, okay.
Finally, it's voting, it's taken. 12 yes and 3 no?
2 no.
2 no's. It is approved. To increase the tax levy limit for town in Norrie for 2023. That being said, while we were voting to get a request to ask if we could, if it was possible to revisit Article 33, and re-vote on whether or not we sell the Norrie Community Church building, and just leave it unsold, just as they are as it is today. Is that right?
Yes, please. Can I, can I speak?
After we get a motion.
Okay.
I need a motion, I gotta have a motion, put it back on the floor, and it has to be approved by two thirds of those who have...
Move, approve.
We have, it's been moved seconded to revisit Article 33. All those in favor of revisiting? I gotta have a two thirds doing it, which I don't have. Okay, I got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
And need to ask who's opposed, because many might have stayed. Two thirds of the voting people.
Certainly, we haven't had any. All those opposed to revisiting the article? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13.
How many do you have, Larry? Huh? How many do you have?
14, I think.
Yeah. I had 13 no, and 12 yes. Is that what you made? Well, we can always stand again and redo it. If there's no one, so, all those in favor of going back and re-discussing the article, please stand. Okay, 13 to revisit. Okay, I want you to be seated, and those opposed to revisiting the article.
We do not revisit the article.
Hold your child.
Now, I make a recommendation to the selectmen, since it's such a high vote and since it's such a small attendance, we gather a larger representation of the population on what to do with this historic property. That's a recommendation. It's just a recommendation to the selectmen, there's no vote applied.
Are you all set?
Thank you, I'll show you a turn.
All favor out.
I would all pay, if all of you know, but I am running for giving lessons to the SAD 44 schoolboy next month. I appreciate your ballot vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.